This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to Wednesday, December 29th, 2021, last meeting of 2021 at Town Hall in Monterey, the Monterey Select Board. I'm Stephen Weiss, the Chair. President and Town Hall is Justin Mayco, present.
John Weingold, present remotely.
Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna jump, we're gonna jump right into it and see if we can get through these issues. So, number one, we need to table that until the test of January. I have two calls into, to the Union, and apparently all I'm getting is an answer. So, are we still posting videos?
Yes, of course we're still posting.
Oh, no, I wasn't, because I thought you were waiting until this had to be signed.
Oh, okay, well, let's see if I can get, if I can finally get ahold of them to, to get this thing done for the fifth of January.
I understand the concern of the screen actors group, but I think, given the fact that there's already YouTube videos posted, right, any concerns probably, and we're going to continue to post YouTube videos, I don't see how it would be a record to post back to June.
Well, so actually, when I spoke to the guy from SCAG, he, I let him know that there were existing videos right now, and he recommended that we enter into this agreement. So, I can't, so, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be right to post any additional videos until we have this agreement. I, he, you know, I tried to be as strong with it as possible. Unfortunately, because of the holiday, they've been, it's kind of difficult to get ahold of, but I'm assured that after the first, I should be able to get to them, and if not, I will actually send them a certified letter.
So, will today's YouTube video be posted?
Today's recording? So, I guess we're not gonna be recording, we're not gonna be posting any videos until this thing is, is signed, but then I'm assured after it's signed.
But the, the Select Board policy hasn't changed. We never wanted to stop posting, so I think we should continue posting videos. I mean, we never, we never changed the policy.
So, I spoke to the Union representative, I spoke to the Union representative, okay, and the Union, and told the situation, and he suggested that, that we sign this thing before anything is posted. I told him that we already posted a few videos.
Too late.
Well, it's, it's too late, we made the policy, we haven't changed the policy. And I understand that there's some concern for you, there's also what we're doing in town and in our.
Okay, so if I cannot, if I cannot get this agreement here inside by the, by January 5th, then we can go ahead and post.
No, but I mean.
Send a certified letter out to the, to the SAG, and ask, and tell them the situation, but there's no way that I'm going to risk my Union status for, you know, for this. I understand, I understand where you're coming from, Justin, and, and January 5th, we should have this, we should have this agreement, even if I have to send out a certified letter.
By the way, point, is this meeting being recorded?
Yes, it was announced by the, by the GoToMeeting at the beginning of our meeting. Was that, does everybody hear the announcement that it's being recorded?
Yeah. I'm gonna make a motion to post YouTube videos, as, as been our policy, to continue, to just reaffirm the policy, and to post back to June when we initially agreed to post the videos on our website, on YouTube. That's my motion.
So, you're making a motion to reaffirm the policy we already adopted?
But also to post back to June, because we only have posted back to September.
Yeah, I'll second that.
I'm not even gonna call a vote, because I'm not gonna take it, because I wanna make sure that, and make sure in the minutes that I did not call, that I'm not calling specifically. I wouldn't know.
All, Justin Mayco, yes.
I vote yes.
New business, Conservation Commission.
That's me.
So, what's happening?
What's happening is I've had a lot of difficulties getting any information out of Conservation Commission. There was, we didn't even know where paperwork, we had to file. We will be, we being my contractor, we will be filing an RDA as soon as possible, I would say within a week or so, and take it from there. My main concern is any questions that I have from here on out. Who do I go to? Who can I ask any questions to, because I haven't gotten any information from the Conservation Commission here.
Have you reached out, reached out to the Chair of the Conservation Commission?
I have. Repeated, myself and my contractor, with no information back.
Have you reached out to other members of the Conservation Commission?
Nancy, I can't remember her last name, was involved a little bit, but mostly it's been Jeremy Roberts. So, my understanding is he's the Conservation Commission President. I figured out with him, right at the time.
So, have you, have you reached out verbally, or you have written in emails or letters?
Yeah, not verbally, emails, repeated emails. We filed a form that was supposed to help determine whether we needed to file an RDA or an NOI, and we filed that in hard copy as well as digitally, and I didn't hear back anything from anyone.
You didn't get, you didn't get any reply, or did you get a reply saying, I'm not?
Yeah, I got a reply that said I needed to take this up with the Select Board specifically.
So, now, you know, you're, you're filing the RDA, right?
Yes.
Which you, which you called to me.
That's correct.
For Andrew, and I guess that's really your next step, right, and then we'll go from there?
Yes. My main concern, like I said, though, is any questions that may arise in the future. Who, who can I interact with? If it's someone at the Town, that's fine, if it's someone at the Conservation Commission, that's fine, but who can I direct questions to in the future? Is my, is my main question.
Okay, so, one thing is we just posted the, or, you know, the Town, the Conservation Commission and the Town just posted the job description for a new agent.
I saw that too.
So, I mean, there's some lax in there, but.
In the meantime, before a new agent comes along, is there anybody who is taking over the agent's position per se? I was told Mike Visser, or Visly.
Mike Visser is not a Conservation, he would be a good, he's a Commissioner, yeah. So, he'd be a good person to reach out to and get.
Okay.
Get his contact information.
I have his email, yes, I did.
Okay. And then, yeah, once you file the RDA, that will enact the formal process.
Okay.
That's my understanding, so.
Go from there.
Okay.
Yeah, if you can't, if you think anywhere with him, we could apply with the name and contact information of all people on the, do you already have that, on the committee?
I do. I also contacted John Moriarty of the Department of Environmental Protection, and was advised strongly to work this out locally before involving anybody higher up, and that's, that's what I'm trying desperately to do here, is, I'm just, I'm caught in the middle, really, in this situation. We basically just wanna build a home addition. We're not gonna be clearing trees, we're not raking on a wetland. Our new addition will be 13 feet too close to the brook to proceed without Conservation Commission approval. We already planned on doing erosion control, is the primary concern, silt fence and straw. My contractor has built in Monterey recently and repeatedly, also dealt with the Conservation Commission as well. So, I'm just trying to play by the rules, and I'm having a tough time.
I think it's admirable that you're doing the extra file, because I apologize for your challenges.
Thank you.
Again, I think, yeah, I think Justin's suggestion that, you know, to contact this, that there would be a good one.
Okay.
And you keep on contacting the people that are on the Conservation Commission, and we get, make sure that all your contacts are in emails or are written.
Yeah, documented.
They're documented, exactly.
I understand.
And, and hopefully, this is, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of things that are, this is a stressful time, a lot of people are, would be not working perfectly, so, I think it's, I think it's a tribute to the Town that you're trying to work it out the right way.
I understand all the difficulties that are, you know, across the board, so.
But as a Select Board, we, while we're, the appointing authority, we don't have, our, our ability to direct the Conservation Commission is limited. So, that, that's a challenge here. I don't know why anybody would say, you know, deal with the, deal with the Select Board. Hopefully, I did see that there is an ad out for a Conservation Agent, and we're happy that will smooth, that will, that will smooth things along. There are also ex-members of the Conservation Commission that also might be available to give you some hints if you don't get with the, you know, that's Plan B.
I have, yeah, I have that information available to me as well.
Okay, good. The density can love it, but there are two people that might be able to give you a little advice. We can, we can certainly pass, pass you that information along.
Thank you. Likewise, I know you just said that you don't have a whole lot of involvement in this as a Select Board, but if there's anything that I can do, please reach out to me, I will do whatever I need to do.
Well, they're only here from the state, so.
Yeah, and the Wetlands Protection Act, so we, we are not the conservation.
I understand.
So, we can't do anything, but you're on, it sounds like you're on the right track with filing the paperwork you need to file, and then go from there, I guess, and.
And obviously, it's to note that you have to come to the Board, where we set up, and, and just, you know, keep us in, keep us apprised. All right, that's good, that's good progress.
I will, thank you.
On this issue, I think it should be pointed out that the, the form that's on the Town website is not appropriate to be on the website, Conservation doesn't give out advice. I mean, that form, I don't know if it's even legal, but I talked to the Conservation Commission, and no one's even heard of such a form, so it probably should be removed.
That form has been on the website for 16 years, and was an agreement between the Plating Inspector and the previous Conservation Commission to try to be more efficient in filings.
Well, you can't have one Conservation Commission giving out advice to a builder. Usually, they just file the RDA or the NOI, and the Conservation Commission has no jurisdiction to give out advice.
Not giving out advice. If you look at the form, John, it's to tell a person whether they need to file an RDA or an NOI, or if they don't fall under the Conservation Commission's jurisdiction.
Yeah, but you're supposed to ask one member of the Conservation Commission. How can one member of the Conservation Commission act on it by himself?
Maybe if you came in and learned how this used to work, you would understand it better, but I would suggest that the current Conservation Commission speak with Don Torrico, because this is something that he instituted with the Conservation Commission to make things flow more smoothly.
Well, I think the form should be removed, or maybe we should give it to Town Council.
They should talk to Don Torrico.
And actually, if it's, I mean, I thought the Town website is to provide as much information as possible, not.
This process was to make it easier on residents, that's not what it's.
Has there ever been a, I don't, I don't think we should continue to speak about the Conservation Commission and what they should or shouldn't do without formally inviting them to the meeting and scheduling them in, so.
Actually, it's the power I go that brought, that brought up the.
I know.
I brought up the form.
For, for Chris here, it sounds like you're on the right track, and you'll keep us updated.
I never, ever use that.
But I, I think if we wanna discuss that, either the Conservation Commission should do it, or we should invite them to the meeting. I don't think we should speculate anymore on what they want.
By the way, this, this thing is in a legal form.
I also, I also did reach out to Jeremy and ask a couple of times if he would be willing to be here in person or remotely, but he never got that, for one reason or another, and if it would help the process in the future at his convenience, I would be more than willing to appear here again.
No, yeah, it's not your, it's not your fault, Chris.
I know, I know it's not my fault, but what I'm trying to do is do anything at all to get this process.
He wants us to start building. Have, have you, have been, do they have a, a meeting scheduled?
There are no meetings scheduled for January or February.
Sorry, there's no meeting?
No meetings scheduled for January or February, was what I was told by Nancy. I'm sorry, I can't remember her last name.
I'm off of it.
That's correct.
Maybe they would schedule a special one again, file the papers, and need to be addressed, they would then set up a meeting, because they need to set up a meeting within a certain number of days.
I'm hoping, I'm hoping so.
And I think, I'd have to do it within a certain number of days or something.
It's 21 days.
Yeah, so they would maybe schedule a meeting.
Yeah, I, I would.
It's just that there's nothing on board right now.
Understood. First things first, the RDA gets filed.
Yeah.
I thought there are no other building projects other than yours going on in Monterey.
I have a hard time believing that there are no other building projects going on other than mine, but that's not my business at this point.
Okay, very good, so we're gonna.
Thank you all for your help, thank you all for your help.
Okay.
If that's all for me, then I'm gonna excuse myself. Good luck. Thank you, thank you all.
Okay, so, and the, Don Coburn sent an email that referenced the same. Don, are you here?
Yes, I'm here, Steve.
Would you like me to read it, or do you wanna read it?
You're, you're welcome to read it.
Okay, Don Coburn wrote an email to the, to Melissa, but he asked that if you read it at the meeting. It says, "Good morning, Melissa, just had a long conversation with a neighbor about the problems he and other residents are having because of, because of the Conservation Commission's inability to function at all. The Commission's last meeting was canceled, and no meetings are listed for January or February. This issue should be listed on the very next Select Board agenda. My preparatory for that meeting would ask you or the Chair to immediately have that Town Council impose the following questions regarding the Select Board's power to deal with a non-functioning Conservation Commission. Number one, has the Select Board immediately removed all or some of the members of the Conservation Commission for cause under Section 40, Section 8, C, and by law, Article 2, Section 5? Two, can the Select Board suspend the operations of Conservation Commission? Three, can the Select Board thereafter perform the operations of the Conservation Commission or otherwise give relief to the homeowners whose applications are not being heard? Four, are their paths available, are the paths corded available for the Select Board to get the work of the Conservation Commission done? Five, might the path include the Select Board temporarily using the services of a Conservation Agent on an emergency basis, Don Coburn?"
Was that an email transferred to the Conservation Commission?
Don? No, the email says to admin@Monterey. I think it should be noted, I don't know, it will surprise anybody, but the last meeting was not canceled. There are actually two meetings held in December, on December 8th, and again on December 17th.
That's correct.
Other than minutes, they both have been approved, so that's not true. As far as what the Select Board can do, I'm of the understanding that the Conservation Commission, in their motions, asked to meet with the Select Board to discuss a path forward. So, I think, rather than take these measures, we should meet with them and talk, discuss with them first, because that's all they, that's what they asked for, is to, for us to meet with them and, and talk with them. So, I don't know why we would remove them after they asked to meet and talk.
So, I, so that's, so that's interesting, so that's true.
That's Don's, that's Don's game plan, he wants to remove everyone that he doesn't like. He's the recall king of Monterey.
And we'll leave the meeting.
Remove anyone that.
I also, also received an email from the Conservation Commission saying, I'll, I can look up the emails if you like, that, that they have no faith in the, in the Board of Select, Board of Selectmen, and that they don't want this, they don't want to work with us, so I'm not, so I don't really know which one it is, which email to talk, to, to have, you know, to follow through with, because.
Well, actually, that wasn't from the, oh, Conservation, the Conservation Commission, including that took a vote. The Conservation Commission as a commission took a vote in their December meetings, asking to meet and discuss with the Select Board, and so, I think before.
And after that meeting, the Chair of the Conservation Commission sent that, sent that email that we received to the Board?
I'm just going, I mean, I'm going based on what the Conservation Commission voted on, and so, I'm just suggesting that rather than remove them, or look into removing them, or replacing them, which can be difficult, as there was someone previously that was maybe going to be removed, and we learned the process is pretty rigorous, maybe we might meet with them and discuss with them as they ask.
So, the thing is this.
I agree.
So, the, the thing, it seems to me that the path of, I'm really only interested in getting the Conservation Commission, the Conservation Commission to fulfill their obligations, because we are, we fulfill our obligations. And it seems to me that that path is, has to do, has to, in order to get on this path, we have to have it, they have to get an agent, a Conservation Agent.
Which is posted.
Which is posted, so, so that's the, so that is, so that is, that could be the solution to the problem, but to didn't have a meeting about, you know, who did this, or who did that, is a personally a waste of time. So, I would recommend that we wait.
It's not a waste of time.
I would wait, I would wait and see if they get a, if they get, to get some kind of application for a Conservation Agent, and then that would solve the problem. You'd have, the gentleman that just came up here would have someone to talk to, and get this, these things going, and the other people in Monterey would have, would have the same path.
There would, what's your timeline on finding someone and getting someone? These people are dying here trying to get work done.
I understand that, and so.
Who's that?
And let's see, let's see who responds to it. I mean, other than that, I would, I would suggest that, that, that people contact the Conservation Commission and ask them. Again, we can't.
No, I.
So, if, I can't take them by the little.
No, I know, I realize that. I'm just trying to put myself in people's posts that I wanna build something, and I need the Conservation Commission, and. And, you know, how long am I gonna wait?
I agree, I agree, so I'm contemplating a.
So, Steve, the Conservation Commission's prior, before we ever had a Conservation Agent, took care of this on their own. The Conservation Commission Agent is just to assist. The Conservation Commission is the ones responsible for.
Isn't that what the Conservation Commission wants to talk about?
Oh, my God.
Well, let's not speculate anymore.
Yeah, exactly.
The Commission may or may not want, I frankly, you know, are we setting a precedent that if a, a board, committee, commission votes to ask to meet with the Select Board, we're going to say?
We just ignore it?
I mean, I don't know how that discussion would go or not, but shouldn't we at least grant them the courtesy of meeting with them and discussing what they want, what they have voted to discuss?
Is that a motion?
I don't think that it matters, I mean, I, I didn't, if someone, if someone.
I have no idea what they wanted to discuss.
Oh, of course you do, come on. Jesus Christ. God.
Steve, can I be recognized briefly?
Somebody right next to you, I can't see their console.
I had his hand up first.
Tom, let, let's have Tom. Tom?
You have to unmute, Tom.
Unmute.
Good evening. As a member of the Board, I would think if a Board voted to, had an issue that they wanted to get advice or hear from the Select Board, that if they voted in a meeting to get on the agenda, that that would happen pretty judiciously, whatever the topic.
That's the way it should be.
Do you have an email from the Conservation Commission asking to be on the agenda?
Their official minutes that were approved.
Did they send the Board an email, or any kind of notification that they would like to be on the agenda?
They would like to have an executive session with the Select Board, is what I remember.
Can you, can you, somebody send me that email that they sent to the Board, asking to be, to have, to have a meeting?
That's the one you didn't wanna talk about in public, remember?
No idea.
The very disturbing email you got, remember, but you didn't wanna say who the name was?
So, that was from.
Jeremy Roberts.
Jeremy Roberts himself, and that was basically.
Justin, why don't you just make, make a motion? It's a problem.
Or are we also setting a precedent, we're gonna, if they're not, they didn't, not only asking for, they wanna, they wanna ask for a meeting, have them send an email to the Board and ask for a meeting?
Okay, I, I guess, I was going based on a motion that was made at their meeting in their minutes, but I will look back in emails and see if they've communicated as much, and if not, I'm sure they're willing to, so.
All they need to do is send it, is send a, an email to the Board.
Oh, my God.
And ask, say, I like, I wanna have a meeting, and what it, you know, what it's generally about. We have to know whether it needs to be in the executive session. Okay, okay.
Steve, may I be heard, please?
Oh, sorry, Don, yes, go ahead.
Thank you. John, your attack is kind of mistaken. All I did was suggest to the Select Board that there were essentially forums on which they should get advice from the Council, why you would not wanna have that advice before you meet with the Conservation Commission, or whether you meet with them or not, I don't understand. I don't know the answers to the questions that I posed, but they're important questions when you have a commission that at the moment is not functioning, and is denying citizens the relief they're entitled to. So, I think you really should ask these questions to Council. Thank you.
So, I have reached out to Council, and they have not responded back. And also, another thing that's happened is that Mr. Coburn was basing his assumptions partially on facts that aren't true, like, that the last meeting was canceled when there were actually two meetings held in December. So, that may have led to some content, but I guess we'll await formal communication from the Conservation Commission based on the motions of their last meetings. I don't know how you reaching out to Council. I don't know how you reaching out to council fits into our council contact policy. I would have assumed you would have come to the board to see if the board wanted to authorize those questions to the council.
Who was on the agenda and, and you're going to be discussing it. I, I actually, we did not, I did not send Mr. Coburn's email to council. I just reached out to them and asked them the board's, the board's responsibility or occasion when it comes to the Conservation Commission. And I, the other way, I also, while, while, while we're talking about it, I also did reach out to them and ask them for an update. If you knew what the status will be of the investigation.
So I, I guess I'm confused because the council contact policy that we spent a month working on and passed earlier this month, I thought questions that we wanted to ask the council, we would bring to the board, unless it was a time sensitive issue. I didn't have, I felt that it was, I felt that it was a time sensitive issue because we were discussing it today. And. Okay, I mean, I mean, I. I did not, you know. Well, that's on the agenda for later, so we can discuss what time sensitive.
Okay, item number two, county administrator item.
So back when you guys reviewed the opioid settlement documents, you asked me to find out from KP Law if it was going to cost us any money, and then you have said no. So I just need to know today if you do want to sign on, so that the state can make use of our funds or not. I have to do that before January, but.
If it's not going to, if it's not going to cost the town any money to participate in the opioid settlement, then I would make a motion to participate in the opioid settlement. Second. Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
HR Director update.
So I was hoping to have a little better news, but we did interview three candidates. We made an offer to our first choice. She declined, she's taken a position elsewhere. We made an offer to our second choice, who has countered that she would like more money, and the group is still discussing whether they are agreeable to that or not. She doesn't have the experience that we were hoping for to demand the amount she's looking for. But again, the other four people need to, to weigh in, so hopefully I'll have news for you by the end.
What position was that for?
The HR Director.
Human Resource Director that shared between five towns, a full-time human resource. We still have time to go to school and get your degree and the job we're. All right, please keep us apprised of, of that development. Director of Open Government Communications in Monterey about a number of open meeting law complaints. So apparently, so we were contacted by Kerry Bernadon of the Director of Open Government. First contact Melissa, and then I spoke to her. She actually initiated the outreach. She, because they, it did not escape their, their knowledge that there have been a series of open meeting law complaints from two particular individuals, Jonathan Silver and John Wingo. And she was clearly was, was calling to say, what's going on? She, they're very concerned, and they did, they are of the knowledge that some of them seem to be retaliatory in nature. They suggested that town, she offered the town and the Finance Committee, because a lot of them were, were Finance Committee related, a training session on the open meeting law. That definitely offered, they weren't really offering to a lot of towns. And I told her I thought that would be a great idea, and I would have asked the board how they felt about it.
Excellent idea.
She offered to the whole town? It's going to be offered, will be offered to the select board and the Finance Committee, members of the select board and Finance Committee, since it seems to be revolving around the select board and the Finance Committee. She did, we also did have some discussions about if she thought we were doing well, if she thought we weren't, that we weren't doing well. She did very much particular note the fact that, that one of the, one of the people that have been filing all these complaints is a, is an attorney. And.
Who was that that you spoke to? What was her name?
Kerry Bern, Kerry Bernadon, Director of Open Government.
Okay.
So, what's the more thing? I would love to do an open meeting law training with the Finance Committee in the select board.
And also KP Law was supposed to be giving us free training too. What about, what happened to that?
So we're not going to be changing the subject right now, right now, we're going to be talking about the, the, this Director of Open Government. Do you think this is a good idea?
Of course. Absolutely, should have been done years ago.
And I would make a motion that, that we reach out to to the Director of Open Government, if we are amenable to it. I would also, after the county administrator, if you haven't done it so already, reach out to the Chair of the Finance Committee and, and so they can put that on their agenda, they can have a vote as well. Right.
How about a second?
Oh, I'm sorry, seconded, I go, yes.
Yes.
Absolutely, yes.
Thinking of which. There was an open meeting law complaint filed by Jonathan Silver. So, so this Silver filed an open meeting law complaint, we read it into the minutes, we read it last.
No, it wasn't on the agenda.
It wasn't on the agenda. So he, he is, so he's making the complaint against just, Justin Mickook and Steve Weiss. Not, and he's saying the approved SB minutes posted on 11/18/21 for the 11/6. Hold on, sorry, too many open meeting law complaints over here, I'm getting this. Okay, Jonathan Silver, there it is. Also, also just sent one against Justin Mickook and myself, John Wingo. There is an OML complaint SB 12/1421. According to the OML, public bodies are required to create and maintain accurate and minuscule meetings, including executive sessions. The minutes must be created and approved in a timely manner. Must include the date, time, and place of the meeting. The members present or absent, decisions made, or actions taken, including a full record of votes, of all votes. Summary of discussions of each subject. A list of all documents and exhibits used at the meeting. And the name of any member who participated in the, in the meeting remotely. The select board minutes of October 6, 2021. Select board meeting were posted on November 18, 2021. Violate the requirement of the OML. PC attached document for complete description of alleged violations. OML complete, OML complaint description SB 121421.pdf. And then in the actions, what actions you want the public to make in response to your complaint. Some accurate minutes are for the benefit of the public, these correct minutes to conform to the OML and to reflect accurately the comments and decision, and discussions pertaining to the subjects discussed and the actions taken. Also include an accurate list of documents and exhibits used as referred to during the meeting. And on the, in the 16th of November of Jonathan Silver. So I understand that we, there was a. That we came up with a response to that. Silver's Select Board analogy is that our 10th meetings are not in compliance with the requirements of the OML. We're sorry for making this mistake, thanks for pointing it out to us, remedy the problem. We will add, amending the 10/6 minutes to the agenda of our next regularly scheduled board meeting on January 5, 2022. At that meeting, we will edit the minutes and bring them into compliance with the OML, including location of the meeting, document used for the meeting, and other items left out. We'll post the revised minutes to come into compliance with the OML. Okay, so I read the minutes and, yeah, I, I, I think it could have been done better. I read, I just deliberately read the minutes prior to and after that meeting, and it seems, everything seems to be in order. So this seems to be a fumble on our part, so we will, we will amend them. So this is, so I have no problem trying to.
Yeah, the only question I, I edited the 10/6 minutes for, which we could review at this meeting, but we could also do it at the next meeting. So I don't know if there's a preference. I tried to edit them to add what was left out, and.
Were you able to get at, one of the, I think one of the things that Jonathan Silver had an issue with was he wanted a list of all people that were, that had attended that meeting.
I don't, I actually don't think that's a requirement of the open meeting law, I have one statement. I think you, I think the requirement is the board members who are present or absent. I don't think, in the list that he provided, at least, it did not say members of the public. I mean, it's a good thing to add when we can, but.
Yeah, there were 70, there were 73 people at the meeting though, so that's, that's my.
I don't, no, I don't think that's a requirement. I don't think he said, so I, the only thing is there's an extract each. John.
So you're going to give us time to look at your edits, Justin?
Watch that. Yeah, we're not, we're not going to be discussing the edits today.
Okay, good.
I'll print out anyone.
Okay. Okay, so do you want to remove that?
Yeah. Oh, sorry, sorry. All right, so it's interesting, so I, Jonathan Silver seems to add, add the evidence of the fact that they have to include everybody with their meeting. Where does this fit?
I'm looking it up right now.
The minutes do not list the members, do not list the members present or absent.
Yeah, so that's just.
Number of the board.
Not the board. And we do list the members.
I don't look at, because I must, you must list the names of the members present or absent.
Right.
Very good. All right, so. We're going to get a copy to sign.
So we will hold out until next week to amend the 10/6 minutes?
Of course. The next one, next one's, the next one is interesting. So this is one from, this is the one from John Wingo.
Is it, is that the one dealing with 10/6 as well?
So actually, no. This one is, so this is the one that, that was perceived on, on December 15, 2021. 10 minutes after, after the select board meeting, last Wednesday's select board meeting. When you left and you're not happy. So, so that, so that's a one. And actually, this one. I'll read it. The approved SB minutes posted on 11/18/21 to the 11/6/21 select board meetings are not factual, accurate, or inclusive, and are intentional violation of the OML. And then what actions you want the body taking response to your complaint. Redraft the 11/6/21 SB minutes to advise the public of what actually happened during the actual meeting that was reported and is on YouTube. Public and written apologize, public and written apologize for this flagrant disregard of the OML. So.
Apparently it's being taken care of.
What?
I can't, I can't, I can't.
I think it was a typo, he meant right, 10 and 6. And he's saying it's already being dealt with by.
Then I, then I would withdraw it because, because, because we're, because what we're going to send to the, to the Bureau of Open Government, and what I had a discussion with, that Mr. Wingo's complaint dated 12/15/21 states the minutes posted on 11/18/21 for the 11/6/21 minutes are not factual, accurate, or, are not factual, accurate, or inclusive, and are intentional violation of the OML. During the board did not meet on Saturday, November 6, 2021. No minutes were posted, the meeting did not occur, and no violation was committed. So.
Obviously it wasn't.
Well, you know, that's, you know, that's the problem with retaliation. I, I mean. Generally, this, this, something open that we had a discussion with the Director of Open Government is, this is not a process where you're going to hit the bat, I'm going to hit you with the bat. This is a process where, where concerned individuals sit down, identify the facts, and then go ahead and try to resolve those facts to the benefit of the public. This is not a, you made me upset, so I'm going to go send it, I'm going to go send it. And it's, and it's my understanding from copies that Steve directed to John Silver and Michelle Miller, that the Director of Open Government is fully aware that, that these, that these complaints are being used as some sort of, some sort of weapon. So what happens is when you. You're prone to make mistakes, and, and this was a mistake, this was a mistake. But this is, but this is what I'm sending to the Director of Open Government. Feel free to. Your open meeting law complaint. John, would you withdraw on the basis that there's already another complaint about the same issue, and it will be on the agenda next week to amend those minutes to bring them into compliance?
Yeah, I think that, that's, that's reasonable, sure. Well, I don't, I don't even know if I can say that at this meeting. I, I mean, don't I have to refuse myself? I don't know if I can address the issue because it's my complaint.
I don't know, but I do feel that it, it, the concern has been raised, and it is a very valid concern, the minutes were not in compliance with the open meeting law, and we are dealing with that. I already made my edits to try and bring it into compliance, and it will be on the agenda for next week.
I know, I agree, but I don't know if I can even comment on. You know what I'm saying, it's kind of like a conflict.
Either they're going to be, in order to withdraw, or they're not going to be. That's the, that's the answer. Item number six, Police Department Part-Time Officer Appointments.
I have a point of order about that. How come the name wasn't published to the public of who we're considering, what we're considering?
Because I didn't have it in time?
We want to violate the open meeting law.
It is.
The Chief and the Sergeant are both recommending a point, 12 month probationary appointment of Lauren Nelson.
We have a, do we get, do we get resumes for the, for the part-timers?
No, you haven't been getting those recently, you just, you take their recommendation.
Okay, so board members, if you'd like to review the resume, please make an appointment with the Chief or the Sergeant. So I, I'm trying to have Lauren.
Lauren Nelson.
I would make a motion to appoint Lauren Nelson as a, as a part-time probationary police officer.
I don't think you can take that vote, it wasn't published to the public.
Is it, is it, so John, is it that the name needs to be put next to the title and appointment?
Of course. You're supposed to get notice in the public.
My one question about that is, is on June 30th, or near the end of the fiscal year, when we appoint, you know, dozens of people in that long list, we don't put that on the, maybe that is against the open meeting law, I don't know, but. Do you know what I'm saying?
If the whole thing is to advise the public of what we're. If the whole thing is to advise the public of what we're doing and being transparent, how can you not put the name of the officer you're gonna appoint? Notify the public. Maybe someone knows this person, and maybe they want to say something about him or her. I think it should be tabled for the next meeting and posted properly. That's all.
Do we?
I have no problem. We're having discussions in open, in open session.
It's too bad we didn't do the open meeting law training already.
Oh, God. You're right.
We do the list of people at the end of the fiscal year. That's when we do the most appointments of all, and we don't put that on the agenda.
Maybe they're supposed to be.
And, like, we're discussing the HR director, but we're not, not discussing HR director whatsoever.
Oh, we're not taking any action on that either.
So it says the listing of topics must contain enough specificity to give the public an understanding of each topic that will be discussed. Doesn't say everybody's names have to be there. You know you're appointing a police officer. Do you want to come and see who it is?
Maybe the public would get to know the meaning.
Well, you posted lots of things you didn't give us information for either.
Okay.
Yeah, Melissa, is there a motion to appoint? I, I need a motion to appoint Nelson to the police department. Second. Oh, I vote yes.
Yes.
I'm voting, I'm not voting on this.
Okay, so there we go, so two and then one person's staying. I should mention also that, especially when it comes to the appointment of a police officer, obviously, we don't appoint a police officer unless there's a need. And to delay appointing a police officer even for a week, if the chief and the field that it's necessary, I wouldn't want to compromise security, take security of the town monitoring. So I feel committed to appointing this person. Okay, Stephanie Sloan to cultural council appointment. There we go.
But her name's listed.
So is this, is this a year? Is it, I like the idea of appointing to the end of the fiscal year, but I know the cultural council runs on a little bit different of a timeline. Is there a request from Stephanie or from the cultural council, or from any, to the length of this, or will we go to the year?
The cultural council is a three-year appointment with a maximum two consecutive terms.
Oh, gotcha. Never mind. So this is gonna be three years. And they need both, oh, motion to appoint Stephanie Sloan to the cultural council for a three-year term.
Second that. Oh, yes.
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 Part-time employee holiday paid off.
Okay, so it has come to my attention that our part-time employees holiday, and they cannot work, especially those part-time employees who have regularly scheduled hours, more so than the ones who work at their discretion throughout the week. Then sometimes they can make up those hours, and sometimes they can't. And I think in order to make sure that people go home with a consistent paycheck, especially around, you know, maybe different holidays, and just every week, because to no fault of their own, sometimes our part-time employees are going home with less money just because there's a holiday and they're not able to work. So I was hoping we could draft up a policy, and there are some complexities which we can talk about, such as some of our personnel policies are in bylaws, and each department works a little bit differently. Sometimes hours can be made up, sometimes they can't. But I wanted to introduce this idea to the board and maybe think of putting policy for that.
I think it's admirable that, so you're thinking about how to make sure that everybody goes home with a proper amount of money. The challenge, the challenge is, the challenge, the challenge is that there's a lot of different types of part-time employees that are impacted more than others. I, there's also, and I'm sorry that I gotta be the, I'm gonna be the bad guy here. You know, for towns besides, it would be important to, to do a study to make sure, to find out what the actual financial pay would be to the town, to properly compensate these folks. And I don't think that we've ever done that type of analysis. Melissa, have you ever done that type of analysis?
No.
Are there any other small towns or towns that are marginalized that have a policy like this that you're aware of?
To my knowledge, Sheffield and I think Great Barrington have policies, and it's prorated for, based on how many hours the part-timers work. But these part-timers have, you know, set schedules.
But like, what about like Egarmont or?
I have to check with Egarmont.
So step one is to, have you done, have you researched at all what else?
Yeah, I don't really, I think oftentimes it's good to look into what other towns do. It doesn't really seem to be a concern here for me. Because I just think it's important to do what's right, and many of our part-time employees are not affected by this because they do not work a regularly scheduled set of hours that is prevented from working when there's a holiday. But we have a few employees in particular, and a couple different departments, that are just straight up told, you're making less money this week, and there's nothing you can do about it. And I also want to make a disclaimer that my parents are both part-time employees for the town, but my mom does not have a regularly scheduled hours, so she would not be impacted by this. And I think depending on how we draft the policy, my father would also not be impacted by this because many of his hours are discretionary. So I want to make that disclaimer that my parents are both part-time employees, but I don't think they're gonna be affected by this policy. However, maybe you'll hear from Dave.
I think two things on this. I've been here for six years now, working at the transfer station, and I believe this is the first time this has come up. If, normally, if the Fourth of July fell on a Wednesday, we would work Tuesday or Thursday to make up for that time loss. This particular time, Christmas and New Year's are falling on a Saturday. It really makes no sense of us being open Friday, and we're gonna be open Saturday anyway, or Sunday anyway. So this is a kind of unusual situation, because usually we do have the opportunity to make up for it. And now, on the finance end of it, I would find it hard to believe that back when you made the budget for the Onray Transfer Station, somebody came up with on the finance committee and said, oh, we can deduct ten hours for two people because Saturday is gonna be a Christmas, and they aren't gonna work. So I find the argument that that money is not available because it was not figured into the budget seems a little far-fetched.
So I can actually answer that because I was part of that budget process, and it was calculated based on the number of days the transfer station was gonna be open. So there is not extra money in the transfer station budget.
Well, I think that there should be, and I don't think when the library budget is calculated, my knowledge, that, I don't know fully how this works, but usually I would figure you come up with your weekly any times at five fifty-two, and I, it's just, it's just not right to say we're not allowing you to work, and so you're making less money.
I definitely get it, so.
I agree. That's, what's the solution, though? We know the problem. What's the solution?
The solution is, the solution is, if you can, if you can do some research, find out what towns are doing this, what town they're doing it.
It doesn't matter what other towns are doing.
Exactly, exactly. Well, exactly what this is. We do, we do see what other towns are doing, because the thing is that if we, if, when we're talking about the finance of the town, if we make mistakes, it's significant. So we'd rather, so I'd rather see what other towns are doing, and if they've been doing it for a while, we know they've, they've ironed out the mistake already. I mean, so, so we're gonna implement something, a policy, that's gonna, that's gonna directly impact the finances of the town, and I'm sorry that I have to mention that, but we want to make sure that the policy is as good as it possibly can be from the very beginning.
And I'd ask that Justin come in and give me his thoughts on it, go over it with me, so I know exactly what it is he's proposing, so I can figure out exactly how to.
If we can just get a, if we can just get a policy paper.
Well, I can, I can read what I drafted, which I shared at the start of the meeting. Part-time employees shall be compensated for hours that they are regularly scheduled to work each, let me start again. Part-time employees shall be compensated for hours that they are regularly scheduled to work each week, but do not work because the hours fall on a day that the town has designated a holiday. I think it's pretty straightforward. If you were signed up to work four hours on a Saturday, and so you're, and the library's closed, and you don't work, you put down four hours, and you get paid for four hours. I would definitely, when we get a shared HR director, run it by them and see what they think about it, and our town council. But I don't think it's complex, and if other towns don't do it, that doesn't concern me. If other towns have a better written phrase of how to do it, that would be impressive.
I would like to, I would like to see what.
And we do that for everything, Justin. It's not just, not picking on this. Anything that's new and proposed, we always see what the other towns are doing, because the finance committee's going to question it. The public's gonna question it. So I would like you to come in and talk to me and tell me which employees you think this impacts as well, so that I know what I'm researching, and, and we can go from there.
Well, I think, and it's a discussion too for the board, but I would think it would be for part-time employees who have regularly scheduled hours. The community center coordinator position, for example, has no office hours, has no regularly scheduled hours. It is a set of hours, I think it's nine hours a week, that happens when it happens. And so my point being, I, I would think this policy would specifically be for those people who have a regular, who only work, you're not letting me finish, who regularly work, you know, Friday, four to eight, at the library, and the library's closed, and they can't work. And so I would think it would affect really people who work at the library, people who work at the transfer station, maybe some people in town hall.
See, you're saying maybe there, so.
Well, I know, I'm gonna make a list of the people that it affects.
What do you do when you have an employee that's supposed to have regularly posted hours, but doesn't come in for them?
And so that's why I'm asking for, because I don't, I'm not a board of one person, so that's why I want to suggest to the board, and see what the board wants to do with it, and have these discussions, and that's all.
All right, so step, step one, we get a list of part-time people, right, of that have regularly scheduled hours. Actually, I'd like a list of all the part-time people, who has regular scheduled hours, who doesn't have regular scheduled hours. That's, I mean, that would be the first step, because I didn't even know that, I have to admit it, I didn't even know that the community center, I thought the community center director had regular scheduled hours. So this is the first time that I, I was, I thought it was the way it was. So that's, I want to get as informed as possible. Also, we're gonna have to make, we're gonna, we should talk to the finance, the finance committee. The finance committee should have a discussion about this as well, because it's obviously has a natural impact on the town as well.
The impact on the town is gonna be negligible. We have eight hundred thousand dollars in free cash. Come on.
So, okay, so, so, so John, you have a fundamental misunderstanding of how a budget works in a town of moderate. We don't base our, we don't base on how much money we have from free cash. We base on, they have to, they have to be, they have to be reasonable amounts of money that the taxpayers, that taxpayers can bear, whether there's two dollars in free cash, or whether there's ten million dollars in free cash. I mean, that's the way you put together a responsible budget. Don't base it on, well, we got a ton of money, so we should go crazy.
No, it's not that. You treat the full-timers, with all due respect, and you treat the part-timers. You can't even pay them for a day that they're supposed to be working anyway. I don't understand the logic.
Nobody is saying no, John, but what I'm saying is.
Exactly what you're saying.
You're mis, that's not at all. You're mischaracterizing what I'm saying at all. I'm saying, for the, our responsibility to the, to the people of the town of moderate is that we want to, we want to get all the information possible, so that when we stand in front of town meetings, and we tell them that we have this, we can answer every single question that there is. But, but this is, this is a good way to start the conversation. So will, Justin, will you, Melissa, come up with this list, so that the board has as much information as possible?
He said, I come up with the list. The board needs to decide who would fall under policy and who wouldn't, right?
So why don't you come in and talk to me, and we can, we can hash some things out first, rather than spending thirty minutes here doing it. You and I can go over some things, and then we can present something for you. That makes the most sense, you know, get all the information together first. Grab the part-time, that's, that's correct, you know, that.
And then once you draft it also, that goes to council, and to see if this should be bylaw, or this should be, this should be an amendment to our employment policy. If it's, I mean, if it's a bylaw, then obviously it's gonna have to go down with people, but it's not, not. Let me, let me, let me say this. You know, I'm, I'm playing the, I pop over here, because.
I know I'm not gonna get paid, but I'm looking forward to the next person that takes my place. Maybe you'd have a better chance of getting replaced.
I, I don't, if anybody works for this one, should be created separately, and should get the money. I'm not interested in stating a nickel off my salary just because we can. But if it's gonna be a policy, it should be applicable, it should be, it should be fully gelled. It should be, and we should know exactly who we're paying, and what, and what, and what the parameters are, and what, and, you know, people want to look for loopholes. So we want to make sure, we want to make sure that anything is, is, so that people have an understanding of whether they're gonna get paid or whether they're not gonna get paid. So we'll have to be able to hand Dave or whoever sent this to the paper and say, this is our policy, and this is where, this is when you do get paid, this is when you don't get paid. And I am curious to see what Sheffield and Great Barrington is doing. I mean, obviously, these are two towns that have been doing it, I'm assuming, for a while, and they're larger than us. And, but I would hope that there would be another account out there about our, doing this as well. But I think this is, I think this is fine. But I'm not saying no. I'm just saying, let's, let's get it right.
Does the select board have the power to pay the transfer station attendants for their missed pay for Saturday, the holiday?
They didn't miss pay. The current policy says that only full-time employees receive holiday and paid time off.
They did miss pay. They didn't get paid for Saturday, where they should have been working on Saturday, but it was a holiday. So they did get, not get paid. And my question is, does the select board have the power to pay them?
So I believe there is a bylaw that says you guys don't have the power to do anything that affects the pay.
Well, I think, you know, it was the policy, and I don't think it was a good policy, but it was the policy. But we'll change the policy going forward, and I think that's the way to respond, really.
Okay, anybody else have something to say? Hey, okay, review council policy, council contact policy.
Yes, so we spent a long time on the council contact policy. And I was of the understanding that if a member of the select board, including the chair, wanted to bring a question to council, then they would bring it to the select board, so that we as a board could authorize that question. So if I had a question for council, I would bring it to the board. But I guess I was, I'd missed, there was a miscommunication, or I misinterpreted it, because it seems like, and I only knew a few, but you informed me of another instance where council. where council is being contacted without approval of the select board and, and instances when it's not time-sensitive or confidential. Um, and I don't know if we want to just talk about it and have an agreement of how to interpret the policy going forward, or if we should consider changing the policy to reflect that, because that was certainly my understanding. Um, so in particular, I'm talking about the letter from the state regarding non-compliance with the prevailing wage law on the library project. And that was sent to council for comment. Um, the letter from committee pickn alley and Heinz was sent to council with questions and we received an opinion on that. And I guess the conservation commission questions, uh, were sent to council and are waiting to respond.
What? What? What questions about the conservation commission?
So I was of the understanding that these requests to access council would come before the board and we would act as a board in approving them. And I don't know why that's not happening.
So it's, so the letter, the letter for prevailing.
Oh, my God.
The letter for prevailing wage was legal, was a legal matter. Uh, what would be the, um, instead, instead you're saying that if the, if the letter came in, you'd want to put it on the agenda, have a discussion about what should we do about this, should we do about this, this letter that we need council's opinion on?
Yeah. And then if someone wanted to send it to council for opinion, they'd say, I made a motion to send this to council for opinion. They, if it made sense to send it to council, they'd get a second and then we vote on it. Because I thought, you know, the beginning of our council contact policy says basically to, let me pull it up real quick. Basically, the guiding principles, um, are whereas the town of Monterey through its select board direction supervises the use of town council, whereas the select board intends to identify appropriate use of town council's time within appropriate protocol. Um, that's about the select board, uh, determining when it's appropriate to contact council, not the chair determining when by himself, because we act as a board. And yes, there are instances where, uh, maybe there's a town meeting coming up and the moderator needs to reach out about a question on the warrant, where it's not practicable for the board to convene. But for the letter on the prevailing wage law on a construction project that happened years ago, uh, I don't know why it's too time-sensitive where we can't bring it up at an open meeting, discuss it and say, let's send it to council as a board and act as a board as this policy says we're supposed to do.
Would that be a time?
Yeah.
Uh, that letter too, from, on the prevailing wage, came from the attorney general's office, went to the town clerk and also was CC to, who they had down as council, who was Jeremiah Pollan. So those, that's where that letter went originally.
Yeah.
And then I believe that Terry dispersed it to various people.
Right. It was Jeremiah that dispersed it to KP Law because it was sent to him.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's.
So, I mean, that, that's why it never went to select board first because it never, that wasn't the process that the attorney general sends it to the town clerk. That's their rules of regulations.
So point, point taken on that one. I didn't realize it was, it was initially sent to the lawyer. So that one I will not, it, it's not related, I guess.
Yeah, that has nothing to.
To, to do with the council contact policy. Good point, Mickey. Um, I still.
Could you identify the people that are speaking? Cause I can't tell.
That was Mickey Jarvis.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
My other question is, do all the boards have a copy of this policy and have had a chance to question it and know that this policy is now in effect? Yes, they do. Okay.
Yeah. So we sent it out to chairs a couple times and department heads a couple times for comment and.
But do they know it's now in effect that this is the policy? Okay.
Yes. And.
Okay, good.
Yes. Um, I guess it's, and the library project, now I understand, is not related to what I think is a misunderstanding here. But, but when the letter from, you know, our representatives went to council for comment, what was the reasoning behind that? What's the reasoning behind sending questions about the conservation commission? Because I remember we talked about going through the whole board so that instead of each board member having their own questions, we can agree as a board to use appropriate use of town council's time and to act officially as a board, which we are, we are not one, three individ, we are a board, uh, it would get funneled through there. So in those two instances, why was the board not consulted about?
So, so we, I'm assuming that the original letter, the, the original letter.
But it went from saying with the chair's approval, it went from the town administrator to Brian Riley saying that the chair had approved it with further questions, not just as a document. Um, and same thing with these conservation commission questions.
I didn't, actually I didn't.
What conservation commission questions? What questions have been sent to town council?
I don't know. Steve referenced them earlier in the meeting today.
You mean Don?
I did not send Don's, uh, email to, uh, to town council. I just asked town council as to what relationship the board had with the conservation commission.
So, and I don't want to dwell on these past examples any more than I need to, to just ask what is our understanding as a board of how this works and how are we going to do it going forward? Because I personally would think, unless there was a time-sensitive or confidential issue, if we had questions of council, because this is what I would do when I read the policy, I would put it on the agenda. I, like, for example, the, um, part-time employee holiday pay policy, at some point, I'm hoping, once it gets drafted up and we look at other towns, uh, I would like to have it reviewed by council just to make sure that it's legal. And I will put it on the agenda and I will get approval from the board. I will not just go to council myself because I thought that's what the policy was aimed at preventing from happening.
Okay. So again, I, I thought that since we were talking about this, the conservation commission, I felt it was time-sensitive. I reached out, I, I, I reached out to council and, uh, and asked them that.
So I don't think something being on our, our agenda makes it time-sensitive.
I think, I think the definition of time-sensitive, time-sensitive, it's not, it's on the agenda. I'm talking about it, I'm having a resident show up here and, and discuss it. I'd like to know. And in light of the fact that there's someone else here, Mr. Coburn had some very salient questions. Um, I just wanted to get a better understanding of, of what the board's relationship is with the, with the conservation.
So can I do that? Can I do that?
No, you can't.
Not based on the policy. And I don't think we need to be consistent. Either every select board member can ask their own questions, get their own understanding, or because we decided that creates too much redundancy and too much of town council's time, the board, when you have a question and you're a member of the select board, you go to the board and the board approves contacting council. I thought that's what the whole policy is designed for.
So I have, I have emails here from, I believe, Mr. Wingo or Mr. Silver, but, um, uh, I think we connected to, uh, Don Coburn in the course of that comment that were copied off to town council.
And unsolicited, uh, people who don't go through the proper process to contact council, they're supposed to refer it back to you, right?
I'm not going to make it, that's been my big problem.
I, we can't stop people from contacting council inappropriately, uh, because people, if they have the email, they can do whatever they want. And that's not right, but they shouldn't be doing that. But we ourselves can follow the policy that we enacted. That's what I'm asking.
So Justin, I do apologize for, for speaking out to council. Uh, I was under the impression that it was time-sensitive, we were, we were talking about it today.
Please.
To council, uh, answer, uh, I will, I will make your answer, uh, available to the.
Okay.
Justin, the question you have to answer for yourself is how long are you going to keep putting up with this lack of stamina from the chair? That's what you need to get straight in your head because there was a policy in place and he violated it intentionally.
So this, this sounds, this story sounds like some good, some good, some, uh, grounds for another open meeting. Well, it's like five minutes from what you've been turned.
No, it's a grounds for a motion to renews you as the chair of the Monterey Select Board.
Yeah, actually, John, I think you said you'd be the, uh, the chair of the Monterey Select Board during your non-boycotting period, not your boycott. I, I, that's, that's what we're hard to do.
I do think that you violated the policy and, and that's all, that's all I wanted to clarify.
I, 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 after, I said, I apologize. I know Mr. Wingo is not going to cut me a whole thing. Um, approval minutes of 121521.
Contains both your edits in there.
Okay. Uh, do you have the same edits?
No, I don't think so. Yours are in red, I think, and Justin's are in blue, or vice versa.
I did, I did, I'm in blue. I only added, I only added two things over here. Um, uh, let's see. Uh, oh my God. Too late. Okay, so that's fine. Pickle work, fair town, mountain road, is, road is spelled out. If road is spelled out, why is the mountain spelled out?
This is 1215, sorry.
Yeah, right. I, I'll probably.
Beer town, not in road. Road was not included, um, which, you know, most people would know, but, um.
Actually, I, I don't know. It wasn't included at all. I, I got it. No problem. Um, how we put the distance in Montreux, I've already referenced it in the edit. Instead of, permission is to access. I don't know how it's spelled out.
In blue, uh, to meet.
Oh, yeah. I actually changed it. Why did it go back the other way? Um, okay. So we have to add another asset to permission. Kind of like, I think that should have to pay for mistake of previous treasure.
So actually me, I should just ask John, because I made.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't recall him saying that. I think he just did one of his patented notes.
John.
Yeah.
Do you, when we were discussing the overpayment to a previous select board member, if you provided a reason as to why you voted no on putting in on a future town meeting warrant as a prior year bill?
Yeah, I thought the accountant should take care of it. For the treasurer, whoever messed up.
I had written with John Wingo voting no because he did not think the taxpayer should have to pay for a mistake of the previous treasure.
Yeah, exactly. I thought that, yeah. Correct. That's exactly the reason.
I do believe he said that.
Okay. I, I definitely wanted to take a previous select board member that's supposed to claim for.
I agree with you. That's why I voted with you, but I remember John providing that. So I thought it would be proper to put in the minutes.
Okay. Uh, previously, so we previously requested this fill-in form. Why would you, why would you put that in? Number four, appointment form on the website. Justin thanked Melissa for making a fill-in form on the website. Has previously requested by this select board?
Because we did. We asked Melissa to make a fill-in form on the website. I bet you did.
Okay. It, it just, it reads like we asked her to do it, she didn't do it, and then she did it. Um, that, that, so that.
Then get rid of previous.
As requested. All right. Should we stay in there? Oh, sorry. And then you can initial the commission one on the other side. Well, you have to circle around. Uh, and then, I wrote a direct letter, Melissa wrote to Justin, revise. That's fine. Um, yeah. And then I did add as the ends because the sentence was, uh, that Hillill asking me, or he asked me about the investigation and, um, I made it more clear. I informed, I informed, uh, given form Hillill, so that, that's still there. Um, then investigation's underway and during such time, select board would not be discussing any parts of the investigation. So we just re-add this part that's. I put that one in there actually. Aha. Thank you. All right. Okay. Okay. So I made a motion to accept the minutes of 121521 as amended by, except for myself. Second, uh, yes. Yes.
Yes.
All right. Okay. So, uh, so we are skipping over the 10 six minutes.
I'm sorry, what?
The 10 six minutes that I edited and we're not. Yes. So I, I'll make motion to, to table out until the other January 10th. Second, go yes. Yes.
Yes.
Review mail on a correspondence to be sent and signed. Oh, boy. Um, uh, council response to John Silver to Rebecca Wolin complaint. Do I have that?
Yep.
KP Law in a letter dated 15th of December, um, applying to town board. Um, hi, John. Uh, as you say, it's been two weeks. So this fire company may be ignoring the letter I sent on behalf of the finance committee. However, I don't think with party purpose or the appropriate use of town council can maybe do anything further at this time. The select board authorized me to work with you and Rebecca on the letter, but there's nothing I can do to compel chief client to respond. This is dispute between members of the fire company and finance committee, and it would be the town, to the town's great benefit for it to be resolved, but there's no legal issue for the town involved. And there's not the role of town council to attempt to mediate this dispute between town departments.
And everything else is just supporting documentation that's behind it?
Okay. So it was basically a lot of emails going back and forth, back and forth and back and forth. And so we're just arguing.
Are you going to read the letter that, uh, was sent that is referenced and not responded to by the fire team?
There's 13 pages attached, I think.
Uh, the last two. Go. Okay. Okay. Uh, this letter from KP Law to Chief Town Tryon dated November 29th, 2021, here, Chief Tryon, with the approval of the Monterey Select Board, I was asked to try and to contact the finance committee, committee specifically committee member Johnson Silver and former committee member Rebecca Wolin, and then to discuss, to address in a letter to you outlining their concerns regarding the fire company, who can be referred to as company, and the interactions between the company and the committee over the past year in particular. In addition to my discussion with Mr. Silver and Ms. Wolin, I reviewed the select board vote on March 18th, 2021, and Mr. Silver and Miss Wolin certain spots to the, to the form of and allegations in that vote. It is the finance committee's position that the alleged harassment quotes of you and the, and the company by the committee is nothing more than the committee performing a statutory duty to collect relative, relevant information from every town department in order to fair, reasonable budget recommendations for the voters and monitor the financial situation and needs of the town. The committee's concerns over the fire company's failure to comply with state requirements to maintain its tax and status clearly within the committee's legitimate jurisdiction, as was the discrepancy over the fire station ramp and railing project and how town-appropriate funds were being expended. The committee members have been able to work with the committee with the company over the years and should be goal or both are coming forward. If, as you told the board selecting last March, you believe that you are being harassed by any committee members or that any contact with you from Mr. Silver or Miss Wolin was a quote reckless attack and quote, please specifically identify any facts that support these claims or these allegations. In addition, Ms. Wolin in particular feels that your allegations against her have damaged her standing and record of service to the community. She requests a her standing and record of service to the community, and she requests a public apology for you for these unsophisticated statements, very clearly yours. Brian W. Riley, copy of select board intent.
Wow.
Right. Yeah, a lot of hurt feelings there. Um, okay, so, uh, what's next? Uh, committee and Adam Heinz response, um, here. Yes, uh, down. So basically, the crux of the letter was that. That's the, the end. Let me read it in there.
Did you give me the wrong one?
1440 letter, that was sent. There we go. All right. Justin's more organized than I am, even though I did figure that. Uh, December 16th, 2021, uh, it was addressed to the county clerk and Mr. White, select board chair, town Monterey, Derek, Madam Clerk, and Mr. Chairman. We write the follow-up of our previous correspondence dated December 8th, 2021, and often receiving additional information from the town administration, Ms. Melissa Nowe on December 16th, 2021, regarding a town Monterey petition for special act to establish a recall election procedure. Upon receiving the information, sent to our offices this morning by Ms. Nowe, we have emailed specifically the official record of certifiable signatures and the explanation of the procedure expressed by Town Council Brian W. Riley Esquire. We believe that we both invoke his conscience and in adherence to the advice provided by House and Senate Council can move forward in filing this legislation in the General Court of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. We want to emphasize that at no point should any of what we have to say be interpreted as a commentary on the matter occurring within the town. We are obligated to ensure that on introducing special, particularly municipality, there's a valid home rule authorization to support the request. This remains our priority and will be our only involvement in this matter at this time. We would like to reiterate that after home rule petition is filed, there is not an exclusive timeline of how long it will take for the legislation to be reviewed by the committee, uh, passed by both House and Senate and signed into law by the Governor of the Commonwealth. We strive to file home rule petition in a timely manner, and will keep the town updated as necessary. As we previously mentioned, with concern for potential irregularities with the procedure by which this matter was placed under your town name, we are, we were advised by House and Senate Council to delay the filing of legislation without taking any stance on this matter or any other matters currently occurring within the town. Thank you for your understanding. We look forward to working with you. Sincerely, Adam, Behind State Senator, Committee Pickettelli, State Representative. So, moving forward, um, okay, uh, then we did receive a letter that we were discussing here from the state, um, about non-compliance, prevailing wage law.
Where, are we skipping C?
What?
Are we skipping C?
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, John, C, John Silver's email about boycotting.
Yeah, you actually have to go to the second page, because I said, I gave you Michelle's response as well, um, accidentally. I put them in order for you, Stephen. I put the pile out. Do you, like, shuffle them all up?
Sorry.
Put everything, go like this.
You know?
Or, or you go show game. That's it.
Don't say show game in the middle of a, of a select board meeting. All right, well.
It's the one that the subject line, Silver correspondence. Can't find it on your mind.
How many papers? I need tabs. Uh, yes, okay, so, um, on December 20th, 2021, at 6:30 PM, um, email was sent from John Silver to, um, members of the select board. He also copied off, yeah, he also copied off, um, his permanent, uh, also copied off Smithy Pickettelli, Adam Heinz, Brian Riley, KP Law. Um, subject is, is Monterey Town Government. Your select board, at tonight, tonight's finance committee meeting, Michelle Miller as the Chair announced she would no longer be recording the meeting, Mr. Preparing the Meeting. When I requested permission to record the meeting using Zoom software, keep review. After I left the meeting, Don Coburn, who has been attended, sent me, sent me the email below. I will no longer be attending finance committee meetings. I can be far more productive working independently. I am copying the email to Town Council, Representative Smithy, Smithy Pickettelli, and State Senator Adam Heinz. I think Mr. Coburn's email speaks for itself, but if Smithy or Adam has any questions, I'm happy to fill them in. Uh, okay, so, I, I, okay, I, I guess, I guess the only thing that I don't understand is, I thought this was about recording meetings.
Michelle's response answered about recording meetings, that the open meeting law does not require the public bodies' audio or video record their own meetings, just that they create and maintain accurate minutes of all meetings.
Should I read into the record, uh, Don's email that referenced in John's email?
Uh.
Yes, since he said.
The email that John Silver was representing, Mr. Coburn, was sent on Tuesday, December 21st, at 6:16 PM to John Silver. John, you are the most total horse's ass I've ever seen in action. By the way, wouldn't it be nice if you joined your act, like, as a part of Monterey's first recall election? I think you deserve that honor even more than Weingold does.
Nice, Don. Very nice, Don.
Everybody's, everybody's, I'll say their own opinion. And Mr. Coburn, Tom. So, naturally, uh, somebody called you a horse to ask, contact the state representative and state senator, but it really doesn't, I don't know. Interesting type of politics. All right, um, so, okay, the prevailing wage, um, this is important because I, because it actually identifies, because I think it's, it's, it identifies who actually made the, the glove, and it wasn't for labor, it was the, was the contractor. December 9th, 2021, to Terry Walker, Town Clerk, uh, to Terry Walker, the, that's the prevailing wage laws, status minimum wage rate for workers on public works projects. Prevailing wage rates include basic hourly pay and payments to certain fringe benefit plans by employers. We will notify all covered public works and projects in your town regardless of the cost or size of the project and apply to projects that exempt from bidding requirements. The contractor listed below was cited by the Office of the Attorney General, was performed during 1231, 2018, to 515, 2019, on the town of Monterey, Public Library Project. The general contractor for the project was Alroni Construction Company Incorporated. Um, and then, uh, I guess they give me this, here's a citation, which is Robert Hitten individually in CMV Construction Services of Cleveland Town, New York, incited for the final violation, um, uh, violation of the national law of 149, 27, uh, failing to pay prevailing wage from 1231 to 2018, uh, to 515, 2019, restitution $13,677.40, civil penalty $3,000. Uh, national law 1, uh, 149, 27B, failure to support true and accurate certified payroll records to the awarding authority on a weekly basis were performed from 1231, 2018, to 515, 2019, civil penalty $1,500, uh, and national law, um, 151, 15, that's 19, 3, failure to keep true and accurate payroll records from 1231, 2018, to 515, 2019, civil penalty $1,000. Uh, information regarding the above citations, we posted on the Attorney General Office Fair Labor website, we have a website address. Uh, correspondence, a reminder, the department projects covered by prevailing wage laws, every awarding authority should request official prevailing wage schedules from the Executive Office of Labor and Workforce Development, Department of Labor Standards, CLS, before bids or quotes are solicited for public work projects. Two, make copies of the wage schedule available free of charge to all bidders or persons providing price quotes, and CLS does not issue wage rate schedules directly to contractors. The awarding authority must provide them to all bidders. Three, review all bids carefully to ensure the bidders are accounting for paying the prevailing wage rates in their labor costs. Four, include wage rate schedules in the contract once a contractor has been selected. Five, ensure no contractor with whom you are contracting is disbarred from engaging in public work. Check the Attorney General's disbarment list, app, and there's a, there's a website. Um, and last, we monitor the contractor's compliance through the prevailing wage law. The construction project prevailing wage schedule must be posted at conspicuous locations of job site. Weekly certified payroll records, CPRs, uh, must be collected from all contractors and subcontractors to be kept on file. We've notified the Attorney General's Fair Labor Division. If contractors fail to comply with these provisions, or if you believe that contractors are not paying prevailing wage, it's for future, um, future prevailing wage projects please be advised that in certain circumstances, the workers who are not paid the proper prevailing wage for all hours have the right of action against the city, what is town to recover, as opposed to with, uh, national law 149, 28. To get any questions about awarding authority and/or contractor requirements under the prevailing wage laws, please visit, and there's a website, sign, work, supervisor, supervising investigator, Fair Labor Division. This is why, very important to have, the surveillance officer in, uh, working for this town at this time.
What?
It's, this, it sounds like the contractor is, uh, yes?
This is not uncommon. Uh, and I can tell you a little background, a little bit about this, that I wasn't privy to the payroll records, but Alroni is a non-union company, and the unions would like to get it, get it to be unionized, and so that is very common. I know I did a very small job for the library at one time, and, uh, the union was calling me and trying to get me unionized and everything else, so, um, that's just what they do. And so if they can find something and pick a, you know, where there's somebody didn't do the right thing totally, uh, they'll, they'll, they'll make a, they'll make a show about it. But what I thought was very interesting, actually, I think this letter is very good and very informative for the town, because that first paragraph, that second, uh, that last sentence, that the law applies to all covered public works projects, the amount of the size, uh, and, and this last part here, where the, the last two lines on the first page, tells you about all that you have to have, it's a good reminders, they really are, and, um, you know, like, posting the weight, the limits, and I, I know people that were in construction, and they, state people and federal people used to go around, and they'd say, uh, Justin, you're driving, uh, you're operating such, such a machine, how much are you getting paid for that? Now, if you switch, so to that machine, how much are you going to get paid? And so that the operators had to know what wages they were going to be paid, and of course, they always knew, uh, but are you getting paid those wages? And that's standard stuff, so, uh, it's, I, I just think that was just referring informative to the town.
Yeah, I, I think.
You know, and it's really, and, and they, they say, you know, for future prevailing wage, be, be careful, because the guy can come back to you. Especially if it was a small job, this is a big job, by the time they found you or I, your time.
Yeah.
They're not going to. Uh, that, I just, I, I really thought it was a very informative piece of information.
Yeah, I mean, you know, you can, you, you really kind of do everything correctly, it's just, um, this is a good.
You know, and as far as a small company getting all the paperwork done right, like, oh, yeah, I got to do that paperwork. Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah, so, um, uh, okay, so that's, so that's, that's that. So, we, 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 we know that it also was just town council aware of it as well. Uh, okay, and the last item that I have here is John Silver's, uh, email, electronic voting. So, um, the email, so I guess we discussed electronic voting, um, in here on a select board meeting, and so in response to that, um, on Tuesday, December 14th, 2021, John Silver writes, to select board, I suggested voting almost two years ago, never received or response from the select board, people left. Um, so.
So, I was wondering, uh, where do we leave off? Where we're going to communicate to the finance committee about our interest in electronic voting?
Well, we were going to, I thought we were going to, to see if there are any companies out there that would allow us to, both, that would, would, put the cost word on, in, in the, for two, for two meetings, big, uh, using the basis of two meetings in a year. And, and if it's not, I'm sorry, um, as I say, to add that, we, we were talking to finance committee, is that, well, obviously, that would have to be a budgeted item from now on, um, with a sole exception, if you could find a company that would let you do it, you know, a lot of them have been offering free services for the first year, uh, then would not be like that.
That's exactly what I was going to ask, because in this email, uh, he claims that the, uh, prize is free, but that's also almost two years ago now, so I didn't know if that's still the case. Um, it's something that we should look into at the very least.
Which it did.
Is it free? No? Even by the same company that used to be free?
No, he's, one of the companies, I don't know which, I didn't read the consulting one, the email, um, one of the companies did it for free for Sheffield because, um, were already in the area doing it for another town, um, and it didn't cost them anything extra in airfare and all that. Um, and I don't recall the response on the other one, because I wasn't prepared for that question.
So, at a minimum, we can get a just call through them, because they're, they're not a state person.
Just say what you guys decided last time.
Yeah.
I was going to confirm the largest number of voters that have attended in past year's meetings, which I attempted to do to the town clerk, and I got a response that she's too busy, and it'll be sometime after the new year. And then ended up sending me numbers, but she sent me the numbers for elections, not for town meetings, which I responded to her and said that you sent me the wrong numbers. Um, and then you also asked me to provide a copy of the summary to the finance committee, which I didn't. So, as soon as I get that information from the clerk, I will get you the information you need.
Can you get the information and then, and then make sure? Um, all right, uh, before comments and questions to the public, um, there's something that's come to my attention, is.
Public records appeal.
Yeah, for some reason, it didn't make it onto you guys', um, but you have it in your, your list, and it was on the online one, the public records, records, appeal, this decision from, just as a little background, John Silver has filed three public records request appeals in the last five days, two of which have been denied, um, and I have one of the responses there for you, um, and I'll be speaking to the woman on the third one tomorrow.
Have these, have this, has this, uh, does the public records, records access officer, has, has he been involved?
Uh, I'm the records access officer. I've been involved, yes. He is a records access officer. He was assigned to deal with those, your, your records access requests, the Nancy Thomas issue, and the one that I requested of the clerk.
So.
See, it was the last documents in the pile. It's a three-page document, as the Commonwealth of Massachusetts at the top.
Nikki, I'm going to hire you as a department business, and I'll be, be my secretary.
Next week, don't unmess them all. Keep them in the order I give them to you in, please.
Maybe you should put the...
Would you like me to see it, because I can save a whole bunch of time and just read it for you?
We'll put a little clip on them, I can't...
Justin, Justin, did you find the Conservation Commission's December ninth email to the board requesting an executive session?
No, I don't, I don't.
Are we going to, is that going back to the earlier agenda item?
Yes. You said you were going to find it. The email was December ninth.
Asking...
I sent you a copy of it just now.
Asking for the...
Executive session, with the meeting?
Do you want me to read it, see?
Oh, read it.
So, back to the item I have. From the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, addressed to me as the town clerk. Dear Ms. Noye, I received the petition of John Silver appealing the response of the town of Monterey to a request for public records, general law, chapter sixty-six, section ten A, see also nine fifty C M R thirty-two point oh eight one. On September twentieth, twenty twenty-one, Mr. Silver requested two categories of, quote, "all communications between named individuals, both sent and received from May fourth, twenty twenty-one to the present," end quote. Over the course of multiple responses, the town provided numerous responsive records. Unsatisfied with the town's response, Mr. Silver appealed, and this case was opened as a result. The public records law, the public records law strongly favors disclosure by creating a presumption that all governmental records are public records, general law, chapter sixty-six, section ten A, D, nine fifty C M R thirty-two oh three four. Quote, "Public records," end quote, "is broadly defined to include all documentary materials or data, regardless of physical form or characteristics made or received by any officer or employee of any agency or municipality of the Commonwealth, unless falling within a statutory exemption," general law, chapter four, section seven, twenty-six. It is the burden of the records custodian to demonstrate the application of an exemption in order to withhold a requested record, general law, chapter sixty-six, section ten B, four, nine fifty C M R thirty-two dot oh six three, see also District Attorney for the Norfolk District versus Flatley, four nineteen Mass., five oh seven, comma, five eleven, in nineteen ninety-five. Custodian has the burden of establishing the applicability of an exemption. To meet the specificity requirement of a custodian, must not only cite an exemption, but also state why the exemption applies to the withheld or redacted portion of the responsive record. If there are any fees associated with the response, a written good faith estimate must be provided, general law, chapter sixty-six, section ten B eight, see also nine fifty C M R thirty-two dot oh seven two. Once fees are paid, a records custodian must provide the responsive records. Current appeal. In his appeal petition, Mr. Silver states the following. Additional records... I'm sorry, are we boring you, John?
Yes, you are.
Maybe you should just leave.
I'd like to hear this.
Additional records were produced upon request after the R A O stated all the records had been provided. B, and one record is a reference to another record that has yet to be produced even after Mr. Silver had specifically requested it. General law, chapter sixty-six, section ten. As to the first part of Mr. Silver's appeal, please be advised that in compliance with the public records law, the supervisor of records may only issue determinations where a violation of general law, chapter sixty-six, section ten, has occurred. General law, chapter sixty-six, section ten A, A. Given that no violation of general law, chapter sixty-six, section ten, has been asserted by Mr. Silver in the first part of his appeal petition, I am unable to issue a determination on that part of the appeal. Records in possession, custody, or control. As to the second part of Mr. Silver's appeal, please be advised that the duty to comply with requests for records extends to those records that exist or are in possession, custody, or control of the custodian of records at the time of the request, see general law, chapter sixty-six, section ten A two. Additionally, in accordance with the public records law, custodians are expected to use their superior knowledge of the records in their custody to assist requesters in obtaining the desired information, see nine fifty C M R thirty-two dot oh four five. However, under the public records law, public employee is not required to answer questions or do research or create documents in response to questions, see general law, chapter sixty-six, section ten A, thirty-two, off Attorney General, one fifty-seven, comma, one sixty-five, May eighteen, nineteen, nineteen seventy-seven. In a phone conversation with this office on December twenty-first, twenty twenty-one, the town's records access officer explained that she has reached out to the individuals named in Mr. Silver's request, and they have confirmed that they found no additional emails responsive to the request. Conclusion. Where the town confirmed that it does not possess additional records responsive to Mr. Silver's request, I will now consider this administrative appeal closed. If Mr. Silver is not satisfied with the resolution of this administrative appeal, please be advised that this office shares jurisdiction with the Superior Court of the Commonwealth, see general law, chapter sixty-six, sections ten B, six, ten A, C. Pursuing administrative appeal does not limit availability of judicial remedies. Signed, Rebecca Murray, Supervisor of Records.
Don, Don's got a handle.
Yes?
Yes.
Thank you. I want to make a couple of things. I recognize that no public... To read anyway. When you decide to read a letter such as John Silver's explanation of him boycotting, if you're going to read his political diatribe, then you, I would think, have an obligation to read the responses to that. There was one by Michelle Miller, and there was one by me. So, if you believe in fairness, that ought to have been done. I'm not asking you to do it tonight, but it ought to have been done. What, what does concern me seriously is that you have an elected member of a board who's announced that he is boycotting that board at the moment when it's about to start on the serious business of doing a budget. That board is entitled to three people. If he's going to boycott it for the rest of the year, you should either treat that as a resignation, or you should, at the minimum, ask him to file a resignation so that you can make sure that the finance committee has three people. You have to act. Thank you.
How come everything's silent?
Everything fine, sorry. Go ahead.
I'm going to make a big speech, and you're going to tell it. Oh, sorry, sorry. So, I, I, I recognize what you said, Don, and it's my hope that, that as the time goes on, that, that Mr. Silver will have the same amount of, will do the same thing that Mr. Weingold has done, and decided that boycotts are silly and foolish, and decided to come back and, and participate in the town's business. So, I, as far as having John Silver on the finance committee, when he's not filing open meeting law complaints, he actually has a lot of good information, and I think, I think actually, Don, you referred to that in your email. So, hopefully, he will change his mind and begin to participate. Right now, I think that we've got enough on our plate to have, to not, you know, try to extract somebody from, from an existing board. Should I read the responses that Don, that were the response to John Silver's letter? He says it's on, I mean, I'm just trying to, I'm looking things along. I think people get the gist of it, unless you feel that it's really neat for transparency.
Well, you mentioned them, you might as well read them.
All right. Michelle Miller, in response to John Silver's correspondence. "To whom it may concern, the communication of Silver below has been forwarded to me. As the Chair of Monterey Finance, I must add context and correction to the overall description of our most recent meeting. It was a reprise of a scheduled meeting, twelve fourteen, canceled due to lack of forum. Recordings and minutes have been a singular focus of Silver's endless stream of document requests and home health complaints filed against me, often without merit, but nonetheless requiring response. In an effort to simplify the stream, I asked Silver to take minutes of the meeting. In spite of its having been a shared responsibility in the committee, Silver refused. I had already disabled the recording function for the meeting as per this communication of Elizabeth Carnes Flynn of the A G's office. The home health does not require that public bodies, audio, or video record their own meetings just as they create and maintain accurate minutes of all meetings," end quote. When Silver requested to record the meeting, I assume that he was using his own devices and acquiesced. He demanded that I record the meeting, which I refused to interrupt the meeting to do. We returned to the agenda and voted two to one, Silver without reason, to accept our eleven thirty minutes. Coburn asked that Silver take the opportunity to explain and vote, he did not. The three home health complaints to Silver were next on the agenda. By voice vote, I was chosen to respond after assurance that they had been reviewed by committee members. Silver had already removed, removed himself. Please note that Silver declined to be Chair as he ought, and by default, I became Chair. On three occasions, I offered to step aside, but he has preferred to be a backseat driver, or is it Monday morning quarterback? He delivers pronouncements and criticisms to anyone who will listen, posing as an authority on the finance committee without consensus from the duly elected body, and without informing us of his intentions. His deliberate expressions are delivered via other boards or his comrade in arms, Weingold. Inevitably, inevitably, the very real work of the finance committee as we begin the budget process has been disrupted. He would be more productive if he turned his attention to the task at hand. Coburn's letter is unfortunate, but sadly reflects the opinion of many. I'm sorry that this matter has been deemed worthy of your, our time. Please let me know if I can be of further assistance, we were meant to live in peace. Respectfully, Michelle Miller, Chair, Monterey Finance Committee." And Don Coburn's response.
I have it right here at the minute.
Response to who?
To John Silver and Michelle Miller. Horse's ass is a recognized idiomatic expression, meaning a fool and a despised person. I did not use it publicly, I used it in a private email to John Silver. Apparently, his skin is on the thin side. Although John is intelligent and sometimes useful, he is nonetheless too often a fool and a despised person. The finance committee will be able to function well without his annoying presence. After all, we are only halfway through the fiscal year, and what has he done? He refused to serve as Chair of the finance committee, even though it was his turn to do so. Worse, he has filed eight open meeting law complaints against the other members, and he did this without once trying to persuade them to accept his interpretations of the open meeting law. Not very collegial. But that awful conduct pales next to his public treatment of the Monterey Fire Company and its chief, Sean Tryon. First, he frequently alleged illegal conduct on their part, coupled with the ridiculous and outrageous claim that they had caused the town to lose hundreds of thousands of real estate tax dollars by not filing technically correct forms with the Secretary of State. All utter nonsense, as was his public charge that the Board of Assessors had violated the law by not refusing to recognize the fire company's nonprofit and non-taxable status. But when the state and the Board of Assessors rejected his efforts to attack and destroy the fire company, Silver then filed a criminal complaint against Chief Tryon. He filed this complaint over a year after an argument between Chief Tryon and the then Chair of the Finance Committee. That argument did not involve John Silver and was not accompanied by any violence. Yet John filed a criminal complaint alleging that Chief Tryon had committed an assault. Our chief of police investigated it and was told by everyone actually involved that there was an assault. When the chief of police so advised Silver, he wrote back asking what else, where else he could file his criminal complaint. I assure you that as a result of these behaviors, Silver is seen as foolish and is despised by many people. By the way, during the joint Select Board Finance Committee budget discussions last year, Silver twice quit when he didn't get his way. And shortly after he began service on the committee studying consolidation of the Southern Berkshire Schools District, I received calls from three members of that committee complaining about his disruptive conduct and asking if he could be replaced as one of Monterey's representatives. So, now he's made our core, now that he's made our correspondence public, I'll just say that I stand by the private use of horse's ass as a way to express my anger at him. Don Coburn.
Oh, bad.
Hey, welcome to Monterey, everybody, welcome to Monterey.
Yeah. Small, lice, little...
So, let me just make one, the comment that I was going to make before we read all these wonderful things into the records. And this is, and this is something that's coming up. I just received new, new COVID numbers for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and they are rising rapidly. There's, I asked the town administrator to stay in touch with the, with the Health Department and, and keep an eye on all the guidelines necessary, because they're going to be changing on a daily basis, which may result in, you know, change of venue, or if those meetings in twenty twenty-two, if these numbers get worse, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense to people at risk of their health.
You should not be holding in-person meetings. You really shouldn't. It's ridiculous.
Can I, can I finish, Don, or you want to give your, if you have?
No, you...
Let me just, let me just finish, I'll be here. In addition, since the board is in town all over the year, and I just received this prior to, I also believe this is, this is part of something that was on fifteen, the D L S just did, did send a notice out, reading town's ability to, to purchase these rapid, these rapid testing kits. I just got it five minutes before, five, ten minutes before, thank you. I would like the board to consider to...
So, I talked to the Board of Health about that. Those binax tests have to be administered by a nurse, so it doesn't, he said it doesn't do any good for us to get them. They actually have to be stored with the nurse and administered by a nurse.
No, they don't. They're administered over a phone. I've got six of them downstairs. They're monitored over a phone.
I'm letting you know what Mark Public Health Agent told me when I...
Well, he doesn't know what he's talking about.
Should the directive, should the directive become more specific between now and the next date, like, where they give permission to go ahead and, and, here's what these guidelines which may include testing of employees, of getting tests on a daily basis? Nikki?
I just had family members in Long Island, we didn't got to go down for the Christmas, we stayed home, but somebody was exposed, went to a doctor for testing, and he said, "You can be fully vaccinated, you can be masked, you're still, you know, risk exposure." But I think a lot of us are still, we go to the grocery store and whatever else, and, you know, we're being careful. And I just think that if the board is comfortable and cautious, I think having a public meeting is so much easier for everybody. And, you know, I don't consider it more of a risk than going to stand in the line at the grocery store and buying my food. So...
Absolutely. I'm just saying that between now and our next meeting...
And it's, and it's a matter of choice, you know, for the public at least, you three are, three of us here, we just go back up the Swan Road and, and isolate there very well. But, I mean, you three are going to be exposed to whatever comes in.
Meanwhile, right.
We've been keeping, you're very low distance, and people have been very low distance and masked and everything else, and, you know, I'd like to see you be able to keep the meetings being live as much as possible.
Absolutely, but as we recall, so, however, there may be a change in, in...
Oh, yeah.
It comes down from the Health Department, I'm saying that if there is a change, there's going to be a change, we're going to change immediately. We've gone, we've gone through this before, you know, we've walked through this before, so, I just, everybody should stay safe and, and...
This, this meeting is a lot safer than...
Grocery store.
Yes, that's true, and I actually went to the grocery store, so you're absolutely right. Anyway, also, to touch back on an earlier agenda item, the Conservation Commission, it is, when I, I woke up, the email, and December ninth, from the Chair of the Conservation Commission, Jeremy Groblitz, to the Select Board and the Conservation, Conservation Commission. He writes, "Dear B L S, the following motions are voted on unanimously, unanimously by the content, and we would appreciate your action regarding motions. Please give us a date to discuss this matter more fully in executive session. We would also like to be on the agenda to discuss the T H job performance as it relates to our agents and commissioners. Please see the attached motions. Also, please find the disciplinary letter attached to be sent to the K P Law for opinion. Thank you for your attention to this matter, Jeremy Groblitz." So, I said I wasn't sure, but we were dedicated to by the Conservation Commission. December ninth, one twenty-four P M.
What is the reading from the executive session?
I think one of the things is we can't discuss confidential personnel issues in an open meeting, but we can discuss scheduling a meeting to, with the conservation commission, which I think is only fair that if they voted and asked for a meeting, we need...
Right. So I just want to make sure, so I, that commission from, to, each other counts down so to make sure that our, that our, having an executive session is appropriate.
Yeah, sure. I mean, as long as we will meet with them, if town council says it's supposed to be an open meeting, we'll do an open meeting. If they say executive session, we'll do executive session. But as long as, if a board or committee or commission votes to say we'd like to meet with the Select Board, then we meet with them. That's, that's fine. I just want to make sure that we, because remember, we did get an open meeting law complaint on, by John Silver, an inappropriate meeting, you know, that should have taken place. So obviously, there are a lot of people that are looking to file complaints, so it's one, so if it's okay with you and with the board, that I'd like to, want to reach out to town council and make sure that, what type of meeting it should be.
Yeah. Great. Do you have any other surprises, gentlemen? Would you like to say something?
I'm not being a gallery, Mr....
Right? Okay, it's like being on C-SPAN or, or CNN. Okay, then, then I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Second. Well, yes? Yes?
Yes.